My mom went to school in Pittsburgh.
It's called the Dune City Council regular meeting of Wednesday, October 11th, 2017, at 6:00. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Forsen.
Here.
Council President Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
Councilor Dirk Wells.
Here.
Councilor Tom Mallon.
Here.
Councilor Alan Montgomery.
Here.
Councilor Robert Orr.
Here.
Keeping on your toes.
Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody needing that? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So who?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So who?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you. Announcements and course comments?
You want me to do it?
Yes, please do that.
Dune City is seeking residents to serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee that is reviewing the land use codes of Dune City. Complications are available on the Dune City website, www.dounacity.com, or at City Hall, 82877 Spruce Street in Wesley. Water meter reader for this year is James McDonald. He will be calling to make arrangements to read the meters of everyone who shares in the Dune City domestic water supply. He will be wearing an identification badge, and if you have any questions or concerns, give us a call.
Is he a resident? I'm just curious.
Yes, he is a resident. Birthday wishes to Council President Sheldon Meyer. I believe you have an announcement about the drug takeback program.
Yes. This actually is... When I was living in the city and working with the environmental management group, we had an issue with it, and it's been coming and going, and they're finally back. The police department, if you have any prescription drugs that are old and you need to get rid of, and you know, it's really not a good thing to flush them down the toilet. It affects your septic if you're on septic, and it really has a deep effect on any of the water systems. And it's really not advisable to do so. So what they... They have a container at the police department that comes and goes, but by mart is on October 28th, from 10:00 to 2:00, you can get rid of those... Any of the drugs that you need to get rid of, and they'll take them back. This is working with the DEA and everybody, and Water Authority, all sorts of people are trying to make this happen because it's really... It can really, really cause... Especially in bigger cities, it can cause really problems with their water systems. Please take advantage of that if you have any of those old drugs laying around that you need to get rid of. Okay. Citizen input. We got a list?
I do, and I believe Mr. Stead will probably want to be out if he's having a door now.
I'm gonna cede my time to him, I'm sorry. I only need a minute.
Come in, John.
Oh.
You wanna sign out, John?
Yes, if I could.
Sure. Come on up. How you doing?
I'm doing great, but my daughter had to call me because she's...
Your daughter?
Yeah.
It's what they do, that's right.
She's in Florida.
So yeah, is it okay with the hurricanes?
Yeah, she's got other... Like everybody else, she's got other stuff going on.
Combs backing in.
All right, folks, we've got nine people. We've got three minutes apiece. We'll try not to run over 20 minutes in total. So I'll just go right down the order. Greg Hicks.
I'm Greg Hicks, yes, I'm a Dune City resident. I had the opportunity to attend the last Planning Commission. At that meeting, they were reviewing or were discussing the application for the grow operations in Dune City. They requested that the city administrator find out if they could recall that application to review. Time is of the essence, and she was supposed to report back. I did follow up with the city administrator last week, on Friday. She said she did check with the attorney who told her that the only one that could call that application back was the city council, not the Planning Commission. Planning Commission voted to try and do that, but hasn't. So my request to the city council this evening is that they request that that application come back and be reviewed. We've done a subdivision. The application process that we went through was much more stringent for prescribed use compared to a commercial operation in an R1 zone. So I'd like to see that application reviewed again, if you could do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Colwell?
Catherine Colwell.
Catherine, honey, I'm sorry.
Hi, so I'm Catherine Colwell, I'm a resident in Dune City. I would thank you for passing ordinance 245. Thank you for taking that measure for our city. I would like to go over ordinance 245 and also the ordinance statute that allowed us to file it. So it's very important that we make sure that the ordinance statute is followed, right? So we have ordinance statute 475V, and our city asks to be exempted from all of these activities as it has to do with marijuana. And then, shocking, there's some exception there listed. So my issue with that is we're preempting state law by doing that. And after talking with two lawyers, it's quite clear that we have an issue. So I talked to Ms. O'Fallon, she works for the state DOJ, and she's willing to work with our city to get it fixed. And it's a real simple fix. You can't preempt Oregon statute, and we did. So it's really great that our lawyer apparently gave you guys some advice because the Oregon State Department is looking into that. But it's up to us as a city to do the right thing by state statute. Because failing to do that opens our city up to a state lawsuit, not citizen lawsuit, state lawsuit. But Ms. O'Fallon and Danica over at OLCC, she's the director of OLCC, they're working together to hope that our city will rectify their error. It's very simple for you to do that. You can simply amend your ordinance to comply with the Oregon statute. And Mr. Orr, I understand your quorum, because we had the luxes filled out in a harried situation by an administrator that didn't have the ability to fill them out. Our code, our city code, requires the planning secretary or the planning commission to fill those out. She did it, she got one, and on the same day she filled them out. Now, you guys all met in a special session on March 30th. I don't know if you recall that. The planning commission and you all met together to talk about the marijuana thing. She was sending out two applications that same day and never mentioned it to any of you, but then went ahead and filled them out later. So it is vitally important that you take this under advisement, figure out what you need to do to make sure that we do not break Oregon statute. And they're really willing to send those back, I want you. Danica is sitting there with them, she wants to send them back. She's been made quite aware that they were filled out improperly. And Ms. O'Fallon at DOJ is very upset that our city tried to preempt state statute. So you might want to take a look at that. Also, I went through and did a historical review of the comprehensive plan, and since 1978, our comprehensive plan has been stated the same way in relationship to residential areas. The one thing it says over and over for years is "family gardens." Family gardens. So when Luba looks at an appeal, they look at one thing. What does the comprehensive plan say? Our... Someone said since 1978, "family garden." It's a huge leap to Christmas trees. It's a huge leap to hay. It's a huge leap to commercial production of a crop. So our zone is supposed to mirror image the comprehensive plan, not the other way around. So I wanted to take a look at that, too. Take it under advisement. I noticed that the agenda wasn't fixed or amended, but I understand the CAC is going to have a review, or there's going to be some talk about it tonight. I did send you a copy, I sent Luba my copy as well. I was hoping Lauren would be here, she was supposed to do a presentation for you tonight. But in any case, we would like to see it go back to the way it used to be so that people have a meaning and they can talk about issues, just like it used to be with the CCI. The way it is now, it's not working. And you can see that one applicant in two years is not considered a workable program. So that ordinance that you... You guys weren't part of it, okay? But there was an ordinance passed to get rid of how it used to be. When it used to be the CCI, we all... There was tons of people as part of that. Now you have one in two years, and it only lasted a few months. So if you really want citizen involvement, you should take a look at how it used to be, and you'll see that that is the way it should be, where people have a voice, not three minutes. Thank you.
Dick Moon?
I understand you called me later, so I'll pass.
Del, resident?
Resident, you were.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council, and the rest of the people here. When... Mr. Mayor, when you... The night that you were sworn in as mayor, you made a comment to the group that you thought that there should be more citizen involvement in the affairs of the city, and they would be more informed of what's going on. And I want to point out to you, because you probably weren't here back then, but in February of 2035, this council passed a resolution basically disbanding all of the committees and commissions in the city except for Planning Commission, Budget Committee, and the Water Quality Committee. So the city didn't want any citizen involvement, and therefore, right after that, if we came to different meetings, the citizens didn't show up anymore. And so I think that the fact that you did that, that the council did that, created a whole lot of problems you got today because the citizens are no longer involved. I think that that should be... That resolution should be reversed, or new one come out and ask for the citizens to be actively involved in the affairs of the community, because it was always run that way. Back in the old days, we just volunteered to do whatever needed to get done, and we don't do that anymore. So I would like to see that changed, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Del. Is it Gerald Curran?
My name is Gerald Curran, at 5600 Sherry Lane in Dune City. I moved here in 2005. I have served on the council before. I haven't served since 2014. And I'm very concerned about the way this council and the way this city is going. Big article in the paper today, in the Eugene paper, proposed pot growths in Dune City, ill-advised. If you read that article, many of the problems we already have, you'll see that Dune City administrative administration, whoever that is, has condoned and granted three marijuana growth operations within the city limits, issuing land use conformance statements without Planning Commission or their consideration. There was no public notice given. They are out of compliance with the recommendations of the laws that they wrote at one time. So whatever we do, it needs to be legal. What we're doing or proposing is not legal. That will cause lawsuits. These are problems that could bankrupt the city. So I advise us to take it under stringent observation, get the community involved, do it according to the law, and find out who the administration is. That would be nice, and who makes these decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wes Carter?
Wes Carter, Dune City resident. At the council meeting on August 24th, 2017, a letter written by me was given to the councilors concerning the actions of the city administrator Jamie Mills, about an email she sent out to citizens and a lengthy editorial printed in the Sayous Law News on the city's official position on marijuana grows, lux forms, and the process, et cetera. As I stated in my letter to the council, the city... The letter that the city administrator put out contained half-truths and inaccuracies, to say at least. For example, and I quote, "Please understand licenses to grow are issued by the state or by Dune City." And Dune had Dune City taken no responsibility for their part of lux applications, not going to the Planning Commission, being filled out correctly, R1 zoning, conditional uses, et cetera. Although the letter did state, "If voters want to change..." "If the voters did want to change, they will have to wait for the question to be placed on the ballot." There was no mention of the opt-out option, and the city clearly knew about the opt-out option, but it was never placed in there. It took a group of Dune City citizens to bring that option to the council and to the city, and we eventually got that passed, and now the election coming to the people. The letter I wrote to the city council was described by the city administrator to the council as a personnel complaint, and in part, I guess it was. My question to the council was that the letter published in the paper, was it sanctioned by the council? Or does the city administrator have the official power to deceive the public? Under ordinance 235, section 3207A, it states, "Except as provided in sub-paragraph C below, all written correspondence, media statements, mailings, newsletters, web postings, email, and other information desired to be sent out or disseminated by the committee to anyone other than members of the city council, mayor, city employees, and other members of the committee must be approved by the city council prior to mailing or sending out or distribution." And B of that same section says, "Except as provided in sub-paragraph C below, all written correspondence, media statements, mailings, postcards, web postings, email, telephone contacts, and other communications desired to be sent out made by any member or members of the committee, committee members, city council, mayor, or the recorder must first be approved by the committee prior to such communications." Since there were no council meetings discussing it before it was sent out as an email and as an official Dune City communication, signed by Jamie Mills, Dune City administrator, it is clear that an ordinance 235 was violated. And I again ask that the retraction be sent out to the citizens via email and in the Sayous Law News newspaper in the same size and scope as it was in the original communication. And in light of the new changes that have transpired, the retraction should contain updates, including the opt-out and the upcoming election.
Thank you. Mary Jo Leach?
Hi, Mrs. Mary Jo Leach, I'm a Dune City resident. I have brief comments. There are two articles that I wanted to place into the written record. Is that... Okay. That will go into the written record. Thank you. They deal... They were in the paper today, and they deal with this marijuana question. And if I sit here, there's just one more thing I want to say, because I've spent a long time looking at this overlay map on line. If you look at that, Dune City has 11 commercial entities in the city. The rest of it is residential, that map. You don't even have an agricultural legend on that map, because there isn't anything here zoned for agricultural. It is zoned residential. I feel that this interpretation, and I'm assuming that Jamie... I can't tell from the minutes of the March meeting, I'm gonna get the audio where you had the work session, the council and the planning commission, but I'm assuming that the instruction was for Jamie to talk to Spear Hoyt again. And all I can say is this, Spear Hoyt led this city down the path with a failing Luba appeal on the septic. And people can say... You will hear people say, "Well, it was just a little... On a technicality." It was not. If Dune City had appealed that 10 times, they would have lost 10 times. It was... There is enough... This comprehensive plan, the charter, the wishes of the citizens of this city, how they want to conduct their lives, is so spelled out, so reiterated over and over. It would never... There is no way any commercial entity will be allowed in here. It's done. It's done. They're restricted, and you're not going to get anyone to accept that. So this little thing that they might have wanted to see, I say that they ignored reading, digesting their comprehensive plan, and I think every councillor here, because most of you are newbies, Sheldon, Duke are not, but you need to digest that, and you need to get those passages, how many times it's reiterated over and over, how we want to conduct ourselves here, and how we want everyone else to conduct themselves. And if you get a really good... That meeting at the... That work session meeting, I know we got left to go into the lawyer, but I was amazed that the planning commission there, the council is there, and if I was there, running the council, I would have said, "Wait a minute, there's a comprehensive plan. We don't need an attorney. The answer is in there. It's very clear what to do." And because the last thing you want is to wind up on Luba again. And I really feel that that's what's gonna happen. And the state, the state needs to be called on as well, and the legislators as well, for demanding a 21-day turnaround on this stuff. This little city doesn't have time. Now, as it stands right now, at the OLCC, there's over 3,200 applications sitting on someone's desk. They took 12 people off their staff and tried to deal with the backlog, but if you look at the applications pouring in, this is like the second gold rush. It's the gold rush, and they're overwhelmed. So it's okay for them now, they're to set them all aside, that everybody else was forced to jump through a hoop, regardless of your staff conditions. I'm gonna find out from legislators, what was the protocol, what was the critical leaking, what was the idea of putting this 21-day? A minimum of 90 days needed to be left. The other problem that we have here, we are unique. That is our water supply. Anything going into the groundwater, lead goal two, is gonna get into that lake. It's in the aquifer. You're talking about prescriptions? They're tested by the state, prescriptions are in the lake. It's unavoidable, okay? It's actually being put there via humans. So we have to control that, we have to protect it, and the charter and the comprehensive plan do protect it. It's ironclad, and it needs to be used. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Peach?
Peach.
Peck. Peck, you're in peck. Oh, I didn't realize I was going to be allowed to speak. I just... Well, I have a few things to say. I'm not gonna use the microphone. I'm just going to say, I've been a resident of Dune City for 23 years, and this is not the first go-around with this kind of issue. And I would say to the mayor and the councilors, please read the initial charter for this city. This is relevant to me. I live in a house, one part of which was here in the 1950s, before Dune City was a city. Dune City is only a city because the state was planning to take it into the park system, and the people who lived here, including the people who lived in my original house, wanted to retain their properties and their land and their homes, and they said, "Well, what can we do to keep this area from becoming part of the park system?" And the state was reluctant to not incorporate it into the park system, so they decided, "Okay, well, what can... Can we make... Allow this to be a city?" And the agreement was, you can become incorporated as a small city, but you need to comply with certain things, one of which, primarily, this is a critical watershed, and you will be stewards of that watershed. And the way you do that is you have one residence per acre, you don't have this commercial development, it's not agriculture. This should be paramount with any decision you make, and it's disturbing to a lot of us to see this continually being challenged over the years I've lived here, because people have some other agenda. And it gets fun, because we have a lot of you. I appreciate all of the effort and time that you put in, because we're all asked to volunteer and spend time on these forums and committees. It's not that I don't appreciate that, but if you accept that responsibility, you have to recognize that you're representing all of us. When I drove down here tonight, I drove down through a lake, and what do I see? I see homes, I see yards, I see people biking and running. This is a residential community. It is not an agricultural, commercial community. So this definitely does not... Isn't a good match for us, and it should be clear to you, as it's clear to most of us here.
Thank you. John?
I've been a resident here since 2000, and before that I lived in Florence. And I have come to focus, as some of you may realize, on what's going on with the water. And so this evening, I want to share a little bit about that with you. So in Dune City, all lots shall be served by improved water supply. The Oregon Literate Control Commission, OLCD, requires that producers submit proof of a legal source of water as evidenced by an authorization from the Oregon Water Resources Department. All waters belong to the public. The right to its reasonable control belongs to the public. Utilization and control is assigned to a single state agency, not to Dune City. It's assigned to a single state agency, the Oregon Water Resources Department. OWRD is required to take actions compatible with the city's comprehensive plan, which specifies that minor economic activities such as home occupations will be permitted if they are not harmful to the air, water, or land quality, and if they are not potential nuisances to neighboring uses. Further commercial activity in residential districts shall be limited to home occupations listed in the applicable zoning ordinance. The marijuana producers propose to obtain water from a well completed May 1st of 2007 for domestic purposes. for domestic purposes. That's what, that information is from the Oregon Water Resources Department. Domestic wells provide water to serve no more than three residences for drinking, culinary, or household use. These producers appear to have requested a transfer permit. Standards for approval of this permit as set forth in ORS 545312 specify that the new point of diversion will appropriate groundwater from an aquifer that is hydraulically connected to the authorized water surface. Groundwaters belong to the public. Control, protection, and use are governed by the state on behalf of the public. Groundwater shall be managed so as to protect water resources, existing water rights, and the public interest, welfare, and health. I'm going to give you copies of this and all of this is footnoted and documented. You know, I'm not just saying this because it's my idea. I'm sharing with you what the legal perspective on this is. And what it boils down to in my eyes is that they ain't going to get any water. How are they going to prove it?
All right, so now let's move on to, oh, to me, an approximation. We spoke about this last meeting, so as of October 23rd. Okay, whereas alcohol and drug abuses in this nation have reached academic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by our committee members, our community members be launched to eliminate and demand, the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, meaning no use of illegal drugs or no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, 2017. Whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service groups, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. Now, therefore, I, Robert Forsyth, Mayor Robert Forsyth, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2017, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage Dune City's citizens to participate in drug prevention and education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visible statement that they were strongly committed to a drug-free city. Thank you. That states it's an action item, Mayor. Does that mean we need to vote on it?
No.
The action was the.
Okay.
Yeah, we did have. That's right. Right, next.
Item is a collective of individuals to, to fill the remaining city council chair of Robert Forsyth.
Those people that have applied, is there anyone in the audience that is applying for the city council seat? We have a few. Okay, excellent. Would, would you come up one at a time with, believe, Mr. Booth, I believe that you want to make a statement? Or, and any of you that have applied, we'd love to hear from you, you know, one at a time as we, as we, as the next one's done. Mr. Booth, would you come up and introduce yourself to us?
I'm Dick Booth, President of Dune City. I just wanted to say why, why I would be a good Dune City councillor. First, I would like to express my gratitude for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Dune City. I believe that brevity is clarity, so this will be short. I have a long time association with Dune City. My great-grandfather had a box factory at the south end of Silk Goose Lake. One of the first things my dad did when he returned home from Europe after World War II was bring my brother and me to Fish Mill Lodge, where we went in one of their small boats and enjoyed the lake. My parents bought the house we now live in about 1969 and it has been a family gathering spot since then. I have read both the Dune City Charter and the Comprehensive Plan thoroughly in preparation for this and wholeheartedly support the philosophies therein. Two items seem very significant in the plans. One, we are a city of semi-rural living, rural low-density residential character. And two, we value very highly citizen involvement in the governing of our community. I believe our city should promote the recreational use of our lakes commensurate with good safety and environmental needs so that many families may enjoy the things that I have been fortunate to experience. I run my life on three basic principles: love God, always tell the whole truth, and follow the golden rule. And I will follow these principles as a councillor. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councillors, anybody?
Okay, I have copies of this. I'm sorry, I thought there were only five of you, so I only have five copies. I don't know how I miscounted that in the past, but I'll give you these five.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next person, anybody?
My name's Andrew Kellerman. I'm a Dune City resident. I heard about this, this opportunity, and I felt that I need to do something for a place that I'm, I pluck a living until I, until I go. I love this little place, I love the people, I love the animals, and I haven't learned to love you guys yet because everybody seems to be mad at you.
Well, you give a little love here.
Yeah. But I think that's okay. I'm obviously outeducated here. I have one of those kind of guys that thought I should learn things myself, and I did. And I've been known for a great imagination and a lot of creativity. And I've made some, what I consider significant strides in life by using those because it's a different approach. And I think I can offer that same opportunity to a city of Dune City. And I'd love to be able to help you folks. I definitely would feel honored if I was councillor here. And no matter what happens, you know, it's like Dick, you know, God's number one and our, our people are number two and we deserve, they deserve from us, all honesty, all transparency that we can provide. So that's it for me. Thank you for listening. Any questions?
Thank you.
Nope.
Next.
Hello, Susan Snow. I think you guys have my resume in the application. I enjoy serving in my community. I've served time in this community that, where we live, for 12 years as a board member and on various committees, capital assets committees, grounds committees, things of that nature. I have an education in business management as an engineer and in strategic planning of resources. I think I'd be a good fit to help out this community. I love being here and I'd like to use my knowledge to try and help out where I could. Thank you.
John. My name's Pat Highsmith. I'm retired. I retired from AT&amp;T after a little over 30 years. During that, I, I was a union store for 26 years where we handled many different grievances. You had to listen to both sides of anything. Before that, I was a Cub Scout leader for three, four years, four years, when my kids were scouts. I've lived here in Dune City for seven years now. I enjoy, I enjoy the fishing. I enjoy Silk Goose. The lake is getting low, not for the one reason everybody's talking about. Apparently no one operates the dam. I don't know what happened there. But I put my name in for that. I do feel that you listen, you have to listen to both sides of everything. And unfortunately here, you only hear one side, but there are two sides to every story.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much. How do you want to handle this? Yes?
I've never seen so many qualified people wanting that civil position. It's very impressive. I thank everybody for putting in an application. I already, I had thought that I knew who I'd like to see on the council, but in all fairness, I think that, I think we need to take time to talk about this for a bit. I don't know if we need a special session or you want to virtually continue on and do, we just have so many qualified people. I mean, like I said, I pretty much know who I'd like to see, in fairness, I was thinking that.
Well, I think one of the possibilities, because remember you can't have a meeting that's four of us or a majority of us, you know? So what I'm thinking is maybe what we should do is have a committee, a group committee to sit and have those kind of conversations that doesn't involve all of us. I don't get a vote, so I'm out of that.
Just a quick suggestion. This is a personnel matter and personnel matters can be dealt with in private.
It's, we're not personnel, we're elected officials, so.
No, 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 no. When you're dealing with a personnel matter, you can do that in private.
That's true. But it's not a personnel matter because this person will be an elected official.
Right. Not a personnel matter.
It is impolite to talk about people in front of them.
Oh, yeah.
I would be, I believe that if three of us were to have an opportunity to further interview all of the applicants and come back with a recommendation for the full council, that that might be a better use of our time and their all time.
That's true.
To set up a time outside of here right now, tonight, and give us a chance to thoroughly, some of these applications are very, very long and.
Yeah, I wish I was back in business at IRM.
And as I told my son a time or two, that my resume looks like I either had a wealth of experience or I could hold a job.
Does it have to be a majority or do we each vote for a person, whoever gets the most votes?
I think what, I think what happens is the, what Sheldon is suggesting, that we group three of you together to actually bring back your thoughts to it and we will have to, we will do a poll and conversations here in front of folks after that, after the recommendation is made.
Would we just take a poll right now?
We could.
Come up with somebody, maybe, or do we need to go more extensive?
I just think it would be good for people to meet these folks.
I'd like one, one, actually, a little bit better conversation than a piece of paper.
Like I said, I already know who I'd like to have on the council and I'm just saying I brought this up because I think it'd be fair to dictate the guy and study this.
I think we need to do that as well and I certainly don't feel, even, even to do a straw poll, I don't feel, I mean, as, as others have said, we have some, everybody here seems to be well-qualified and I, and I think we need to really take a little more time with each, with each candidate. That's, that's my feeling. I couldn't make a decision right now. Let me ask the folks in the audience that applied, would that be good for you to be able to sit down and meet the three people and have a better conversation? Would you be comfortable with that? All right, I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Sheldon. So here's a lead that.
I suppose. Do you want to, you want any of the two others?
Tom's awful quiet down there.
So Tom probably ought to be one, sure Duke could help out.
I get this.
How about that? Did that work for you, Tom?
That'd be fine.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Jamie helped us set this up.
So Jamie can help set it up and get everybody in there so you guys can have a really good conversation.
I'd like that.
All right. Saw how I escaped out of that. All right, appointing to the individual to the L.A.N.E. A.C.T.
L.A.N.E. A.T. is the L.A.N.E., L.A.N.E. area, I want to say commission on transportation. It might be committee on transportation.
Well, if it is, it's a very large committee.
They are actually the ones that decide how road money in L.A.N.E. County, the L.A.N.E. County road money will be spent. And Mr. Councillor Orr has volunteered early on, graciously volunteered to do that and then got terribly, terribly busy.
True, I regret.
With other things. And now you can attend L.A.N.E. A.T. committee meetings on the telephone. However, they are on, like, today. Up there on Wednesday at, do you remember what time? Four o'clock?
Yes, like, three maybe?
I know, three o'clock in Eugene.
And they're somewhat lengthened. Yeah, can be.
Can be, quite lengthy, yes.
Especially during the appropriations.
However, if we don't have a presence, we're probably never going to see any money from L.A.N.E.
I, I served on it when I was at the port, so I'm very familiar with it. And it's a, well, it can be rather taxing. It's, you're, you're correct. It's the only way that we have any chance of getting any kind of ODOT money, that sort of thing. So it is kind of important that we have a presence there.
And that can be done by telephone likely, or email, or internet connection?
Yes, it can be done by telephone.
Right.
Internet, I'm not sure yet. I don't know if they, they never, when I was there, they had not gone to, you know.
I don't think there's a video over it. No, I don't think so.
No, I'm not familiar with that one.
In the interest of anybody here, seriously?
I have a question. Do you have to have a councillor do that position?
All of the people on that accent, ODOT are elected officials.
I was wondering if, with these four applicants you have for the councillor position, if of the three that you don't pick, if one of them could be your appointed representative?
We, we can check, but like I said, at least when I was dealing with them, every one of them was elected official, but that's a great idea. We can check into it.
We'll look into it. It may be that you appoint a councillor and an alternate.
Yeah, that kind of.
And then the alternate, because it does connect to our council meeting.
It's a good idea. All right, should we continue? Should we continue? Planning Commission Annual Citizen Involvement Program Report. Bonnie Allen.
Bonnie is the chairperson of the Dune City Planning Commission and was not available to make it this evening.
Oh, okay.
So she asked me to read the report into the record.
Excellent.
Committee for Citizen Involvement Annual Report to the City Council, October eleventh, two thousand and seventeen. By the way, the annual, the Committee for Citizen Involvement is required to do an annual report to the city on how the citizen involvement is working, the plan is working. In October of two thousand and thirteen, the Dune City Council adopted ordinance number two-two-three, which amended the Citizen Involvement Program, CIP, portion of the city's comprehensive plan, and established the Dune City Committee for Citizen Involvement, the CCI, as required by Oregon State News Planning Goal One. Ordinance number two-two-three also appointed the Dune City Planning Commission to serve as the city's CCI. The primary objectives of the CCI are to assist the city council with continued development of a citizen involvement program that promotes and enhances citizen involvement in land use planning, to assist in the implement, implementation of the citizen involvement program, and to evaluate the process being used for citizen involvement. The CCI reports to the city council and provides information on effectiveness of the city's citizen involvement program in an annual report to the council. In its September two thousand and sixteen meeting, the Planning Commission, in its role as CCI, directed city staff to publish and post public notice solicitations, soliciting applicant, applicants to the Citizen Advisory Committee, CAC, to review proposed changes to Dune City's Land Use Code, Chapter one fifty-five, Zoning and Development, Sections one five-five-point-one, one five-five-point-two, and one five-five-point-three, and to provide recommendations to the Planning Commission. Notice was posted and also published two times in the Sainsbury News. One application from a Dune City resident was received and the applicant was appointed to the CAC by the Planning Commission on October twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Having received only one citizen application, the Planning Commission also appointed its members to the CAC. It's, okay. The CAC began its review in November two thousand and sixteen and continued in March, April, May, June, August, and September of two thousand and seventeen. The CAC has completed review of one fifty-five-point-one and one fifty-five-point-two and has compiled a preliminary list of recommendations for the Planning Commission. The CAC anticipates that it could complete its review of one fifty-five-point-three and submit its final recommendations to the Planning Commission by the end of two thousand and seventeen. In summary, with the appointment of a, of a resident to the CAC to review its proposed changes to Chapter one fifty-five, we see some indication of citizen involvement. Ideally, there would have been more than one applicant. The CAC member resigned in July two thousand and seventeen due to conflicts between his work and CAC meeting schedules, leaving only planning commissioners remaining as the CAC. As evidenced by the recent outpouring of citizen interest in marijuana businesses in Dune City, it is apparent that residents are concerned about regulations that shape our city. The challenge is to bring out more citizen interest, awareness, and involvement in the actions and decisions facing the city council and the Planning Commission. In its September meeting, the Planning Commission directed city staff to publish new CAC recruitment notices, which has been done. The recruitment notice states that applications to the CAC will be accepted until October twenty-fifth for consideration during the Planning Commission's October thirty-first meeting. If no applications are received, notices will continue to be published. The Planning Commission will continue to explore ways to make recruitment efforts more apparent and hopefully more fruitful. Respectfully submitted, Bonnie Allen, Chairperson, Dune City Planning Commission.
Thank you. Chapter, Chapter ninety-eight street, we wrote design standards and draft materials.
You'll find the proposed language, which is very rough.
And long.
And long, I'm sorry, and doesn't, does not yet include stronger energy.
Where did we get, where did this information come from? I assume we didn't make it up ourselves.
Um, I started with the, actually what I started with is the HUD recommendations. Of all, every time the prior councils have approved a planned urban development or a subdivision, they've attached conditions.
Okay.
And not all the conditions are the same, but some of them aren't. And so what this does is rather than leave all those little conditions, which ends up being a book, just out there, the suggestion that the Planning Commission members made to staff was, well, why don't you just incorporate those in design standards? And then they apply to everybody and we're good to go. So that, this is an attempt at that. So I started there and I looked to the city of Bend, I looked to the city of Florence, I looked to some local cities, um, smaller cities to see what they might have and that's all this is. It's a stab at that, trying to make our requirements for how you pave a road, uniform.
Okay. Any questions for staff? All right. That too, we continue. So this is actually a consolidation, isn't it, different?
Oh, this is just a discussion and I would hope that the counselors, if you have concerns or want to talk about it, or suggestions, or changes, would call me directly or come in and talk to me about it so that we can go over and come up with a product that everybody...
There's a request by Randall and Dennis Johnson to acquire property owned by Dune City. Do you want to go through that? And I must say that the map that is on there is kind of...
Yes, what this is, involves is the road, the unapproved roadways of the Silk Coast Lake Hub plat that were given to the city by Lane County, that were deeded to the city by Lane County, um, late last year.
Only the approved, or only the, uh, non-approved, uh, non...
Unimproved.
Non-improved.
Unimproved roadways.
Right, got it.
Mr. Johnson, and I'm talking Dennis Johnson, is the owner of a piece of property that, there's no other users of this property. So this one makes this one easy to deal with. We've been debating, what are we going to do with these roads? We really don't want them, well, want, some of them we may want. Ms. Counselor Orr and I will work on an ad hoc committee, a plan to, to examine those. In this particular case, it is a piece of property that is, quite frankly, half underwater. The city did...
On purpose, or?
Well, no, they put in the dam and, you know, there you go. They, uh, he does have an, has a permit from the city to have his water line cross this piece of property so he can draw water from the lake. Um, and he is the only house that would benefit from this property. Nobody else, it doesn't join anybody else's house. It's not an easement, it's not being used as access for any purpose. So I thought this might be an easy one for us to cut our teeth on, if you will, when we start looking about how we're going to, to do this. And there are some tough questions that need to be answered. Like number one, are we going to sell it? Or, you know, how are we going to do this? So, um, I would suggest that we have a, an ad hoc committee to help staff look at each one of these and decide how best to proceed.
Okay, and for the record, I must tell everybody that even though I don't have a vote on this stuff, unless there's a tie, is one of these, not this, has nothing to do with this one. But you have a non-vacated road that joins my property that, uh, two years ago started the conversation of vacation. So everybody knows that, uh, that I won't be voting on any of this topic. Uh, yes, you're right, this one is small, pretty straightforward. Mildly concerned if it kind of sets up precedence for other ones that might not be as simple, but that's just, I, everybody's thoughts, please.
Well, I've read this and I think it's a pretty easy one, too, seeing where, when you were applying the paperwork for yours. I'd like to make a motion with two, uh, conditions on it to go ahead and turn this, get the paperwork started, turn it over to the Johnson, Dennis Johnson, as long as he takes care of all of the financial obligations that may come about and that he leaves the city with a utility easement, for whatever reason, if we ever need to have a utility easement on that piece of property. But I'd like for, let Mr. Johnson have this for costs of survey or whatever expenses may be involved.
I would like to see a better map of it. I'm not sure what we're dealing with at this point.
We, we had a motion, so we need a second or a non-second so we can have discussion. So we can have the, all right, second, okay. Motion. Discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah, there you go.
Now I'd like to see a map of the place.
Right, keep the street.
Unfamiliar, it, it's a dead-end road, it doesn't go anywhere, it's underwater.
It's not even a road. It is an undeveloped piece of ground.
It is, it is a roadway.
Yeah.
Right, if on paper.
Twenty, thirty feet wide, do you know? Thirty-three. Thirty feet?
Thirty feet, yeah.
Okay.
I, staff would respectfully request that you appoint a committee to go through each one of these, um, one at a time. And we will consider the requests that we've received and go through them one at a time for those conditions. I mean, there may be other conditions, for example, of, oh, you have to have easements for these other people to get to their properties. That's going to become an important one, um, because that is definitely a situation that exists out there. So, and sign off or whatever.
I think you definitely have to look at them.
And there are conditions that cities must meet in order to sell property because that's what this would be, this would be a transfer of property. It's not just a vacation. It would be an actual transfer because we own it, own them in fees, in fees terms, so...
I'd say it would think it's going to be much simpler than this one. Good place to start.
I, I, I would like to say, and I've heard it said not directly, but I think it's important that we say that each one of these is looked at individually and that there is no precedent set by whatever we may decide about this one. Okay. I agree.
I agree with that, yeah.
Well, you and I agreed when we first sat down here six months ago, we looked at these and we dropped it like a hot potato.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like you to offer that.
Happy to have dropped it.
Well, uh, but you're right, there are decisions that need to be, need to be...
And I think Counselor Montgomery makes a good point. You need to go out and eyeball it. You need to go see it.
Well, I volunteer again, we need to get, need to actually do the work this time.
All right, we had a motion in a second to, uh, to approve this particular one. Do we want to continue with that or do we want to withdraw that motion and go on with the committee?
I think we go on with it with the condition that we look at the property.
Well, there is a request, uh, Counselor Montgomery asked for a better map and I believe, Jamie, you said that there are questions about the fact that this is a transfer and not a vacation and how do those questions need to be answered before we actually make a decision?
Right, like, do we have to get paid?
Right.
Yeah, I didn't think we had to be paid, so...
On vacation, you pay the cost. On an actual sale, because this is a sale.
Or transfer.
We may be required to show consideration somehow.
I wouldn't order that, so I'll go ahead and withdraw my motion.
All right, thank you. Uh, committee kind of conversation. Gentlemen, anybody want to sign up for this or take a look at these?
Try it again.
You want to pick? So who do we have? We have Allen and Duke and Bob? I, I will try again. My schedule obviously got very busy, but if you'd like me to try again, I will. All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Integrated Emergency Management Course. Those are always good, sir.
At the last Western Lane Emergency Operations, or WELOG, where...
WELOG, huh?
Chief Langor reported that he had been at a conference and was able to speak to the trainers that had come out from EMA to teach the course he was learning. And the trainer indicated to him that the trainer would be willing to come out and do a class in the city of Florence. It's called an Integrated Emergency Management Course, but they had to have a guarantee of twenty to forty people to attend. Now, I know we don't have a fire, you know, there's the fire guys and, and all the members of WELOG and that kind of thing, but they did request that each member of WELOG go to their governing board and ask for commitment to allow employees to attend this training and hopefully we reached that, that goal of a minimum number of people to attend.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So that's what they're asking for.
Need your motion?
I just need a commitment.
They just need permission, okay.
A motion is better, yes.
Well, make a motion, okay. So moved? Yeah. Is it, do we have an actual, okay.
What was it?
What she said?
That you will commit to allow Dune City staff to attend.
Is there a second, yeah?
Second, second.
All of them?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? No, the staff, you can't say no. All right, that's passed. Resolution eighteen, BLCB Planning Assistance for Anticipation. Want to explain that one?
Well, there's two grants. One is the Small Cities Grant, which is a thousand bucks and it's pretty much coming to everybody who sends them this little piece of paper. But the other one is the Technical Assistance Grant, which is significantly larger. It is due to, uh, Friday, to be submitted on Friday and requires a resolution or letter of support from the governing body. So therefore, the resolution is for you. We are currently asking for, I want to say sixty-five, fifty-two? Even after my changes? Okay, fifty-two thousand dollars. And it would be for completion of the review all the way through the city council of Title fifteen, which is our land use code, um, and codification. If we're approved.
So do you need a motion to approve this? So moved? Second? Don't know if we needed one. I would, uh, resolution, should we read that in full?
You can.
Yeah, I think we probably should, just sort of notice what we're talking about here. Uh, Resolution Series two thousand and seventeen, number eighteen. Resolution supporting the submission of a grant application to the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development and recommend staff to prepare and submit such grant application for technical assistance in the review, amendment, approval, and codification of Title fifteen entitled, quote, "Land Use" of the Dune City Code of ordinances. Whereas the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development announced the opening of applications for technical assistance grants for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and nineteen funding years to technical assistance resources to help small cities update, review, adopt, and codify their land use codes. Whereas the deadline for such application is October thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, and whereas as part of the parcel and grant application process, the city's governing body must adopt a resolution to support said grant application. Now therefore, for, and in consideration of the foregoing, the Dune City Council hereby resolves as follows. The Dune City should submit a grant application to the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development for funding for technical assistance in reviewing, updating, amending, and approving codification of Title thirteen, Dune City, entitled "Land Use." Further resolve that Dune City staff be, and therefore, there, and they are hereby instructed to write and submit such application adopted by Dune City Council this November eleventh of October two thousand and seventeen. It asks for, uh, the A's and N's, it was passed the annual state. And I see you've got that almost done. And I see you've got that almost done.
Call for the question.
Sure.
There was none.
No, we had a motion in a second.
Oh, in a second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, opposed? So now, thank you. And it appears you've already started the process.
Yes.
Resolution nineteen, adoption of the charter cable franchise agreement.
On the dais?
Mm-hmm.
You should have some documents that are labeled confidential.
Where are we?
Or do you have?
I've got the resolution.
You've got the resolution, is that the contract? Yes, it's, okay.
The whole thing is.
All right, fine, this one's not confidential, one layer of it. The franchise, proposed franchise agreement is in your packets. I have another to contact Charter at home, if you have any questions that you want to ask of their representative. This, I want to make sure it's clear that this is strictly charter cable services, it doesn't include internet. We are negotiating internet, we continue to negotiate with internet franchise. So this is strictly char, charter cable, and we've, pretty much, it doesn't harm us, I mean, you know, pretty much, we were lucky that we already have a right-of-way ordinance in place that requires certain things to occur, and they couldn't go, they couldn't change our code, so they still have to comply with our code. So we're really happy with it, and in addition to that, we're going to get free charter for the TV here, the TV in the office, and for the fire station in Dune City.
And, what, five percent of?
The maximum, yes.
Maximum of five percent? Service area for the subscriber?
Correct.
First, you know.
The biggest contention that we argued about was that they wanted an assurance that should another cable company come into the area, that we negotiate a franchise agreement with, that they, that they get a copy of it and be given time to request from us to have the same treatment, if in their, if in their opinion it gives better conditions for the other one, because we are required to treat all of them exactly the same.
Yeah, I went through, I didn't see anything that was striking, other than the fact that we've been doing month-to-month for the last two years.
Yeah.
Which is never a good thing. Okay.
I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Natural gas public safety.
I believe that's in your packet.
Yeah, I read it.
I'm not sure how to take the letters, I'm hoping that you guys picked up on something. I mean, my gut instinct is they're saying, hey, we're going to come out there. But I haven't heard anything because.
It's NW Natural, is the name of the company, it's a natural gas company. Portland, they have some, it appears that they also have an office in Goose Bay. I had not heard of them before, but they're rated as an A-plus out of the B-Berthys Bureau. They have the typical complaints online, customer service, you know, can't get a hold of them, that type of thing. The only series of complaints that I saw that did kind of concern me a little bit, simply a lot, overwhelming amount of complaints were their employees entering people's property unannounced or without authorization. Other than that, it just appears like it's a notice that they're on their way up here to try to sell their services. That's how I took it, it didn't appear to make any kind of agreement with us or try to make any.
Anybody else have ideas?
So I thought, yeah, coming to the area.
Yeah, just, you know, hey, here we come.
I'm familiar with the company.
Are you?
I am, and matter of fact, I used to deal with their, with their stock. They are a great company. They do a good job, they've been around a long time. Far as complaints, people crossing property, you know, their venue is primarily Portland. It's hard to say what they're running into there, but I currently have an account with them. I buy gas from them, and I've known, I'm native Oregonian, grew up around Northwest Natural, so they, I know the company, and that's just my opinion.
I wasn't sure whether they were planning on piping or construction, or selling compressed natural gas.
I'm sure it would be worth finding out a little bit more about what this notice really does state, what Mayor's telling us.
Yeah, pipeline's a huge project.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, seems kind of odd, yeah. Although, natural gas to the coast probably would be a bad thing.
No, sure would.
Jamie, would you? Could you get staff to call and try to clarify why we got this letter? I mean, it would be interesting if they're really trying to do business.
I'll make get a hold of this.
Yeah, would you please?
Compliance manager.
Say?
I'm thinking too, that maybe we need to test the water on franchise agreement, because that's, I mean, it's what it's all about.
That's not, would you? Appreciate it. I think that'd be.
But in light of things that are going on, you may want to consider asking the Planning Commission to call the CAC, so that you can get some citizen input onto, on whether the citizens here want natural gas, because I know there, in some communities, there are a number of people that prefer natural.
Yeah, call first, find out what that is.
Listen, they're doing by going to Goose Bay.
Yeah.
Okay, quarterly budget committee meeting, scheduled.
Do we have a date soon?
We just went again.
I'll get the calendar.
Do you all have calendars or something?
Got calendars.
The third quarter has now ended.
Okay.
And so it's time to do the quarterly budget meeting. And you guys are tough to get together in one spot, so.
Are you proposing a particular week, or, I mean, you would like, we can do this any time from here forward?
Yes, I mean, or you could put it out and do two quarters next time if you want, but I would.
I think we want it to do each quarter.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
All right, let's get to the staff.
And bear in mind, whatever day you guys choose, I'm probably going to ask that we have an ad hoc road committee meeting that same day, so that we can try and, if that works out better. I think, Alan, you're the one, well, no, I know Bob, I'll do, you've got a job.
Duke has a good time.
Yeah.
What day of the week is best for you guys?
Wednesdays are open for me, mostly.
Mostly.
It's fine with me.
Any day for me.
Doesn't matter, maybe the appointment tomorrow.
Right, I just have to look at the day, so.
Yeah.
Pick one and let's see what looks like.
Pick a Wednesday and tell us what you have going.
Eighteenth, twenty-fifth.
Um, any, eighteenth or twenty-fifth?
And what time of day are we looking at?
That's up to you guys.
Well, we want to do it within reasonable staff hours.
Right.
We don't want you guys, you know, having to be here.
It's whatever is convenient for you guys.
You're ready for the meetings?
Oh heavens, no. I won't take very long to get ready.
All right, next Wednesday?
Eighteenth.
Yeah, all right, anybody, what, what do you like, four?
Three.
Forty?
Forty.
Sometime between three and forty.
Yeah, good, three thirty.
Yeah. Three o'clock, or four o'clock? Four minutes.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, let's do three, get it right. Three o'clock to eighteen. So be it. Okay, no public hearings.
I wanted to, we wish a four, right?
Three.
Three o'clock.
Next one. Before we leave the new business, I would like to go back to the first or second part of the new business, to discuss the input from the citizens, in terms of whether we should request that we review, as a council, the application for the marijuana grow sites. And I'm proposing that we do that.
I second that agreement. You know, not just review the applications, but to make sure, like it was brought up, that we're following state statutes.
Exactly.
I think we.
Can you do that by requesting the OLCC to send this back?
And OHI, yeah.
Okay. That's part of my motion then.
And there was a second, if this is a motion to.
It's a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, excellent. Do it. All right, so, the meeting with the Best of the West events, the folks that put on the triathlon, we met with them, there'll be another meeting, what was more of a get to know each other, that's kind of how I work when I get into negotiations. I told them who we were, they told me who they were, that kind of thing, saw what they're doing, where they're going. We don't have a written grant with these people, so as I go through the negotiations, I told them that we will have a contract or will not have a contract, but we're not going to continue down the road with a handshake, or a, because we forgot to write one two years ago, type of thing, so. I've got probably another, at least one more meeting, maybe a phone call meeting, and I'll get back with you and tell you what would come out of it. And they are, they are, that's where we, they're receptive to using Rebecca's name in some fashion as a memorial to the, so, since that seemed to be her baby, I think that's, we'll see what we can come up with. Also, and this has really nothing to do with anybody on the board, but Jamie and staff have received an award from League of Oregon Cities and CIS, a safety award, and that was picked up, I was unable to attend the LLC meeting, and it was picked up by Mayor Joe Henry for us, and accepted, and this is an award to Jamie and staff.
Thank you.
It's a good thing it didn't fall, because we get injured here. Community center report. Duke, you want to report?
No, you just told us you went hunting and you bagged two out of three so far.
Oh.
May I say something to your counselor?
Please.
The wire is dead. Lighthouse stopped by and we asked if he'd check it, he put the thing on, that wire back there is not connected to anything.
It's stuck somewhere else.
So, yeah, well, we can, ours goes, yeah, but there is that, but no, it has no power. So we can continue to dig the trench.
Okay, well, because of that.
Because of the trench?
Yeah.
Water control, quality.
I have not received a report this month, so I think everything is okay still.
we've got one employee and some temp employees, you know, we just didn't have the money. We negotiated a, a deal and reached agreement on it, and, and we have taken those photos down off the website.
And, and just so you know, according to our law firm, it was, they looked into it, and this group is known around the United States for doing the same thing, so it's kind of a business. They do, they go after and look for pictures that have not been properly.
Yes, they received a call from the state of Washington. They had recently received the same notice of intent to sue that we received. This was before we'd entered an agreement, so they wanted to know about term, but, oh, so, you know, it's out there. It's already out there. Did Wash, did Oregon steal it from Washington to begin with? No.
Now, now, now.
If you want to find out. I have a lot of votes, I have a good deal to offer.
All right, reports. Jamie and I met with, as I told you last meeting, that I would meet with the best of the west of, yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do need authority to sign that agreement.
Oh, we already gave you authority to do the negotiation, go sign it, that's why your name is.
But I don't have authority, well, I don't really, they wanted me to, he wanted you to vote on it.
Okay, all right, we can do that.
That's all.
So, we need a motion to have Jamie sign and release the funds on this funding, on this settlement for licensing. So moved. Say? On papers.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Do it.
Do it. All right, so, the meeting with the best of the west events, the folks that put on the triathlon. We met with them, there'll be another meeting, what was more of a get to know each other. That's kind of how I work when I get into negotiations. I told them who we were, they told me who they were, that kind of thing. Saw what they're doing, where they're going. We don't have a written agreement with these people. So, as I go through the negotiations, I told them that we will have a contract or will not have a contract, but we're not going to continue down the road with a handshake or a, because we forgot to write it two years ago, technically, so. I've got probably another, at least one more meeting, maybe a phone call meeting, and I'll get back with you and tell you what would come out. And they are, they are, what's the word? They're receptive to using Rebecca's name in some fashion as a memorial to the, to the, so. Since that seemed to be her, her baby, I think, so, we'll, we'll see what we can come up with. Also, and this has really nothing to do with anybody on board, but Jamie and staff have received an award from League of Oregon Cities and CIS, a safety award, and that was picked up. I was unable to attend the LLC meeting, and it was picked up by Mayor Joe Hemmerich for us and accepted. And this is an award to Jamie and staff.
Thank you.
It's a good thing it didn't fall, because we get injured here. Community center report. Duke, you want to report? No, you just told us you went hunting and you bagged two out of three so far. Oh.
May I say something to you, your counselor, while it's, please? The wire is dead. Light House stopped by, and we asked if he'd checked it, he put the thing on, that wire back there is not connected to anything.
It's stuck somewhere else.
So, yeah, well, we can, or it's got something, yeah, there is that.
Yeah, because that damn, it's weird up there.
So we can continue to dig the trench.
Okay, well, we visit that.
Visit the trench?
Yeah.
Water control, quality.
I have numbers here to report this month, so I think everything's okay still. I'm still drinking.
Internet blowing, so. Public Works.
I'm on it, I didn't make copies of these, and you've probably seen it, so, but I'm gonna, just one set of all the pictures. This is the work that's being done on Keachley Arm Road, and the first few pictures are photos. Remember when we had that rain on the September twenty-first, and it rained really hard for a very short period of time? Those are pictures of the runoff that was, that we were dealing with, with that, and why this is necessitated. So, it's coming along, looking really good. And I hope, I haven't been over there today, I didn't get a chance to get over there today to see if it's silting. Hopefully what we've done will prevent it from silting.
Keachley Arm? Energy Services, all right, Emergency Services?
I attended the WeLog meeting. And we've already had a go about chief landlord, what he was requesting. City of Florence did get some grant funding to put in more tsunami signs. City Rep, uh, Cert Representative Frank Melti is, he's in the process of cycling out the outdated items in the storage containers. He said, the reason this is important to us is because, you know, we've closed on the property across the street. We're looking at how, how best to go about storing emergency supplies for the city. And he says, don't, you don't store bleach, because it doesn't store well. The bottles eventually rode away and they, they made mess. He does recommend that we put in some sort of dehumidifier to help keep it dry in there, so. I also attended the Wednesday session of the Oregon Emergency Management Association Annual Conference in Eugene in September, and came away, I'm sure you've read the report, with a lot of ideas. For example, one of the most important lessons Japan reports that it learned was to require your new buildings and construction to come down to higher standards. They, at this convention, they showed photographs, they, a contingent went over to Japan and met with a whole bunch of city officials and stuff, toured the disaster areas, and they showed pictures of a roadway, and this is a highway. You know, our pillars are big under our roads, they're huge. This roadway, it's a four-way highway, was stood a forty-seven foot wave. They didn't wash it out, and it was still usable. So, it's possible, it is possible to, to build to the extent, now, the question becomes, you gotta weigh it out, is it worth it? You know, what's the gamble? But, so anyway, so it came away with a bunch of things like that, and some of the, the things I thought were interesting, that what they ran short of most were shoes. They didn't have shoes for people, that was one thing they said, make sure you store enough food, and, not foods, shoes. So I thought that was really strange. And the other thing I learned is that DiAmi now is in the process, and it's not going to cost us a dime, yay. They can do a report based on the information of how many homes we have, how many roadways, how many structures are in the area, and use their tsunami maps and the earthquake information and can guesstimate or predict how many deaths we're gonna have, how much debris we're gonna have to deal with, probably which roads are going to make it, which ones won't. All kinds of wonderful information. They expect to have that released by, they're, they're finishing up Portland right now, so they expect to have the rest of it finished by, I think it's next fall. That's really cool, because it says, well, this is what we need to store, you know? So that's all on that one. There's, I mean, the report's in here, and the, the report that I'm giving to, to WeLog is also in there. You ready for my report? Okay, there were eight building permits issued in September, three electrical, one mechanical, two structural, and two plumbing. There were two public works permits issued in September, including one grading and one shoreland zone vegetation removal permit. The CAC and Planning Commission met on September twenty-first and discussed the marijuana grow issue. And the chairman had asked me to check with the attorney to see what the recommendation is with that, with, with regard to withdrawing the locks. I think I've had this confrontation with some of you. But the attorney said that needed to come from the city council, because the planning commission in that case, unless the city council specifically asked them to do that, the, the planning commission would be acting in advisory commission, commit authority rather than a decision-making authority. We did one site review this month, and I know I'm gonna get calls about it, but it's kind of necessary. One of our local residents' houses is sliding into the lake, into Silkus. And he's got an army of engineers working on it. And we've seen preliminary drawings, but we should get more later. It's going to require installation of, I don't know how much concrete. Concrete piers under the house to hold it up, to keep it in place. Thankfully, it only results in removal of one tree in the shoreland zone. And I, 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 I haven't, I don't see any way around it, he's gotta do it. Let's see, and the contractors will ensure installation, appropriate self-hensing, and other protections necessary to preserve the water quality to the greatest extent possible. The woodland lane road repairs are done. However, the city's already received complaints about them, so the city, we went out and looked at it, and we'll be talking to one of the other landowners. We have a different suggestion for fixing that now. But I would like to take just a minute to remind everybody that our public works supervisor is basically a volunteer. I mean, he does not want to be paid. We have to pay him minimum wage, because CIS says so, to cover my insurance. We do pay him for the time he uses for his equipment. He owns fourteen road construction companies throughout the west, western United States, and is very knowledgeable and is willing to volunteer his time to do this, so he's really helping us out. He really is. And we're always looking for people, if you want to come help me in the middle of the night, when it's pouring down rain, somebody's garage is flooded, and I have to get down there and put up water, hay bales or something. Come on down, give me an hour, I'll got it. Let's see, the Culver Parkway Drive should be finished this month, if it will quit raining. September's complaints primarily have to do with office staff, how office staff performs their jobs. You will need to address the complaint that was brought up tonight. I've been contacted by the governor's resolutions team manager regarding complaints received by that office, by a local Dune City resident. There is a discussion about, they had about sending down the resolutions team for an investigation. I don't know whether we have to pay for that, or who has to pay for that, but I haven't heard back on them, so. Let's see, I have been, oh, talked to the water master regarding Silkus Lake. On the day that I talked to her, Silkus Lake was at seven point four feet. The dam is closed. The company, well, the order allows the owner of the, of the dam to flush the system this time of year, but because there's not enough water in the dam, in the lake to do that, they won't be doing that this year. The dam will be open for fish spawn as usual. During that period of time, they're allowed to lower the lake level to try to keep it at five feet. They can let it go as low as three feet, but if it gets to three feet, they have to close the dam. So that's what the order, the direction of the order, and it is, the levels are being checked every day by the water master. And meter beers going up, reading your shape. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'd like to make a statement if I may.
Sure.
I, I would like, first of all, to thank all of you who spoke this evening, and to thank all of you in a broader sense who came out this evening. I think it's wonderful that we're here in front of you. I would also like to thank you for what I consider to be a very civil meeting. You were, you spoke and we listened, and that's the other thing I want to say, is that we did listen and careful. And I can only speak for myself in saying that I certainly have some research that I want to do based on some of the issues that were brought up this evening. I'll let my colleagues speak for themselves, but I think it's important to acknowledge that issues were brought up this evening that, that certainly need to be looked at. And I want to thank everyone for participating this evening in the way that you did participate, and that your words are heard. Thank you.
I feel the same way, I'd like to thank all the folks that applied for the city council position, and I'm also very grateful that we're revisiting this commercial marijuana growing funds. No bone, pick no bones about it, I, I don't see it, how it fits in our city, and I'm glad we're revisiting that.
I agree with my colleagues at the CACs. Thank you all for coming and participating and being adult.
Yes, thank you for coming. I agree, this is absolutely, the marijuana grows are not a fit for our city, but to be fair, we didn't let them start. They should have been stopped way, way, a long time ago. They have spent a significant amount of money. One of my first statements when I started hearing this coming is, we are going to get sued. If we allow it, we're going to get sued, if we do not allow it, we are going to get sued. And I think we're on the fast track for that. Don't know what to do.
May I just?
We're listening.
May I just have one more comment, and that is to say that my wife and I moved here because it's a beautiful place to live, and we very much want to keep it that way. The water, the trees, it's just, it's a wonderful place to be, and we're, we're sensitive to the issues that, that have been brought up, and we want to keep it a beautiful place.
Again, as I told you a couple of years ago when I was sworn in, we will get better at this. It takes us a little bit of time. We have to work within the confines of our rules and regulations of how we conduct ourselves and how we conduct meetings. That said, thank you all for coming out and conducting yourselves in a manner that allows information to be passed on and digested. It, it, I know for myself, anybody raises their voice or starts to get a little puffy about something, I kind of turn off and get defensive, so. It's great to see you all, I'm glad you kept the tone that you kept. Thank you for your involvement. And I really hope that once this one issue is resolved, that it's not just that issue that's bringing you here. All right? I want to see you all here even when there's just normal business to do, because that's what we're supposed to be doing. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second. All fair?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.